Tonight, May 3rd, 2021. Begin with the consent agenda. Any changes or corrections to the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, Don speaking. Mr. Chairman, I approve the, moved to approve the agenda for May 3rd, 2021.
Second. It's been moved and second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Alright. Alright, moving on. Approval of minutes for the last meeting, April 5th, 2021. I understand there is one correction on members absent.
That was me, I was absent that day.
Alright, Mr. Merriman was not here. Are there any other corrections or discussion over the agenda or the minutes from last meeting? Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes with the modification.
I move that we approve the minutes with the modification.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We approved the minutes from the last meeting with the addition of Mr. Don Merriman absent. All in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, motion carries. Item two, review the goals and objectives as outlined in the Seline County Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 4, Section 1, General Land Use Policies. I'll turn it over to staff. If you want to take us through that.
Alrighty. Mr. Chairman, this is staff-initiated review and amendment to the Seline County Comprehensive Plan currently enforced as adopted in 2008. State statute encourages annual review of the plan with full revision approximately every seven to 10 years. Our current plan is 12 years old. Last year, the Planning Commission directed staff to begin updating the plan. The first item considered was in November when the Commission recommended approval of the incorporation of a new section within Chapter 4 addressing policies of the Fort Riley Unmanned Aircraft System Corridor Overlay. The next topics for consideration are the goals related to the general land use policies outlined in Section 1. And the way this Section 1 is basically governs the, or states' policies that are what I call day-to-day kind of operational type of functions that we do within the county that enable us to kind of enforce the zoning. It's kind of like the backbone type of goals that are outlined that we use that gives us basically a, you know, just what we do on a daily basis. Empowers us to do what we do for the public on a daily basis in planning. The policies, this section establishes the basic development policies for specific growth areas as well as preservation of rural lands outside of these growth areas. Because each policy has its origin in one or more of the recommendations outlined in Chapter 2 of this plan, the Commission will also have an opportunity to consider the relevancy of key planning issues as outlined in Chapter 2. The following, I've broken down, Section 1 policies with relevant corresponding key planning issues found in Chapter 2. Because the majority of the policies from this section continue to be implemented, staff has determined that they are still relevant with some minor wording changes. Any tables or maps referenced will be examined at a future public hearing that will involve kind of like tweaking the specifics of different, like the land use map and that sort of thing. But this is just in general, gives staff direction and the Commission as well, the direction to use specific tools that we currently enforce on a daily basis. The, what I would like to do before actually going over Chapter 4, if you want to, I can just briefly go over Chapter 2 and just briefly highlight some of the policies because that's, since that's where the origin of most of those policies for Chapter 4 come from, is from the recommendations in 2. And just to kind of refresh your memories and it kind of like, you know, let, just to let you know how this is broken down and going forward, it starts in Chapter 2. So, the key planning issues that were determined important for Seline County were preserving agricultural land. This would be the preservation of the county's agrarian heritage is a high priority for most residents, though the motivations are quite varied. Farmers and, you know, have the ability to continue farming without interference from non-farm residents. And it goes on to explain basically plan recommendations. And I've outlined kind of like in my staff report that references these. These are the recommendations that I refer to and I've given you the page number as well. The second item is the Development Review Standards and Processes. This is again, one of those things that empowers staff to do what we do on a daily basis. This is, involves like commercial permit review that we have with the city as well as floodplain administration and management. And any kind of daily permitting for like where to, where to set, everything from where to set your house for setbacks to where to, you know, how many structures to have per acre and that sort of thing that we have for density. The other item following that would be rural road system development and our funding. And the recommendations there are outlined as well. Avoiding natural hazards that would take into account the updating of things like the, our flood insurance rate maps and that sort of thing. Making sure that they're enforced by staff and the county to the way that the state and FEMA Region 7 want us to enforce them. That type of, you know, again, that type of goal usually just, it's a daily thing. It doesn't really change unless there's a change at the state level, you know, where we're directed to change something. That's pretty straightforward. Protecting the Smoky Hill Weapons Range. This is one that's also very standard, you know, in dealing with the Army. And we also have one of the goals or one of the policies would be rural growth. This is a big one in terms of, this is the, what sets, you know, our density standards, our, you know, making sure that we have like the, like what we've established, the development rights and that sort of thing for each parcel many, many years ago. And so that's where this, this basically is just a continuation or kind of an affirmation of those, those types of policies to make sure that the rural areas are preserved, but also where there's opportunity to grow, to grow in areas like, let's say, commercial, you know, non-ag type of uses. And this is where we get, you know, basically policies for establishing rezonings and that sort of thing for commercial and industrial type uses in agricultural areas. And the, another would be for, we've got providing for small city growth. And that's, that's included under that rural provision, the rural growth. Balancing land resources and development needs. And another big one would be service provider coordination. This again, is one that we do whenever we have like either a new plat or even a conditional use permit or rezoning. We always inform other agencies. A lot of times when you see my staff reports or, yeah, I'll say, are there, you know, there's a section that I leave in my staff reports that says, that refers to other agencies' comments and that's where this comes from. The, and there's other items like ensuring adequate water supply that falls under there as well. Balancing private property rights with community interests and some recommendations under there. But are there, before I move on to Chapter 4, are there any questions about any of these that you might have? Again, these are just, these are the things that have been determined to be of interest to Seline County back in 2008. And I guess in general, what I would ask is, does this sound like, you know, they still are relevant to you all? I think that from, from, from my standpoint in terms of their wording, it's all still relevant. It's general and, and, and open-ended enough to where I think that it can, we can continue to have each of those that are outlined and not really make any major changes to those.
Any comments or discussion from the Commission?
You mentioned there may be some minor wording changes. Have you kind of determined where that needs to happen throughout the chapter?
In, I've gone over that in Chapter 4.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, in, in the staff report, I've listed kind of where those changes might occur. Really, a lot of what I see in Chapter 4, Section 1, which is what we're going to go over tonight, it's, it looks more like a redundancy issue where, you know, there's looked like areas that you can consolidate specific policies and, and word it so that it's not quite as, you know, you know, where you have a repetitive kind of language where you'll say, you'll, it'll mention something about floodplain management on one policy and then it mentions floodplain management again on another policy. And I think that there's ways that we can combine those together. But what I've done is, is under Chapter 4, if you want to, to go on to the first page on Chapter 4, I wanted to kind of go over the planning goals that are outlined there on the first page. And they get their source again from Chapter 2. Their origins are from those, those recommendations that were outlined that I just went over. And the planning goals are agricultural preservation, population growth, economy, land use, natural resources and public services, facilities and utilities. And each of those, like as an example, agricultural preservation, to preserve agricultural land for its natural resources, economic and cultural value for fiscal benefits and for the contribution to the open character of the rural area. And so that's agricultural preservation. I think that's still relevant, that definition would, and goal would still be relevant unless you could have any, think of anything else that I could add to that. But I think that pretty much sums up the, the, the goals that we have for making sure that there's, you know, agricultural preservation. For population growth, to provide an adequate supply of housing opportunities to accommodate projected growth needs and a sustainable choice of rural suburban, small town and urban lifestyles. In, under economy, it's to provide an atmosphere attractive to existing and new businesses in industries that will strengthen the area economy through responsive partnerships. To this end, the county will support ongoing workforce development and training. Seline County seeks to foster economic growth that does not adversely affect the environment, either physically or aesthetically. Under land use, to provide for the healthy and attractive growth of the city of Salina and Seline County's smaller communities and designated rural residential areas while retaining the agricultural character of, of the balance of the county. Okay, under natural resources, they, to provide for the economical and sustainable use of Seline County's natural resources in an ecological and responsible manner. Under public services, facilities and utilities, to efficiently provide for adequate public facilities and services that meet the demands from planned land uses at a, at a minimal cost to residents, businesses and the county. Do those goals sound pretty close to, you know, something that we want to, you know, you know, like I say, they're, they're all pretty much straightforward. I don't think that there's going to be-
Any discussion from the Commission on any of these? And transportation's the last one, right?
Right.
Any concerns or-
Transportation, to promote and protect Seline County's varied regional transportation links, highways, airport and railways, and to provide local citizens with an adequate, safe and attractive road system at a minimal cost to residents, businesses and the county. And with that, I will go ahead and just kind of explain, under my staff report, the, what I have written down in terms of potential changes, in terms of consolidation that we might have for, for some of these. Under G1, which is the policy under Chapter 4, these are, this is pages 15 to 19. G1 is again, where, when I'm referencing the tables, like Table G1 and all of these or maps, it's, it's, these are specific maps and tables that we'll look at at a future date. It's just, these are just basically day-to-day, like I say, the operations that refer to the maps that we use every day. And that's why I don't, I, so, use Table G1 to determine which zoning districts are appropriate in each growth area. Staff feels that, that, you know, basically that's being implemented with no changes recommended and it should continue as worded. Policy G2, use the growth area maps, Maps 1 and 2, the primary rural road system map, Map 3, and flood insurance rate map firms to guide land use and development decisions. These maps help identify areas where non-agricultural land uses should be located in the future. Zoning decisions in the urban service area around the city of Salina should be consistent with that city's adopted future land use map. Zoning decisions in community growth areas should be consistent with smaller communities' future land use plans. While the maps may indicate that a particular land use is appropriate, the county can also consider the adequacy of existing and funded road improvements as well as capacity of other affected systems, water utilities, schools, fire, et cetera, before granting any kind of zoning application. G2 is one of those where the, the corresponding planning issue was the Development Review Standards and Processes. And the comment that I have on that is implementation is ongoing. It can be consolidated with the follow, the G3, which is the next one I'm going to go over. And so G3 is maintain official growth map, primary rural road system and flood insurance rate maps firm that are updated to include amendments as they occur. So, my thought was because it's referencing the maps and, and what we generally enforce on a daily basis for floodplain and roads and that sort of thing, that if we could combine that with, in some way with G2, because the wording is very similar. And I wanted, just wanted to get your thoughts on that.
Okay, would this be something as simple as just adding that verbiage to G2 that we maintain?
Yeah, to make it kind of blend in to where it's just a one, you know, and then that way it would save that much more space on the paper as well, you know, because a lot of this too, when, when I, when I look to, to make things, you know, consolidate this way, I also think in terms of the public, because this is being a public document, I want it to be as easy to understand for the public, you know, to understand what our goals are and what all the, how we, how we operate. And this is, this is the way that, you know, the comprehensive plan is the way that the public sees, you know, what we, how we view the county and how we implement things through our land use policies and just to make it as easy for the public to understand as well and follow along. And so.
I certainly agree with that. You make it, try to make as user-friendly as possible.
Exactly.
Yeah, for, for everybody.
Exactly.
You know, I mean, not everybody are planners, so.
But G4 is to ensure that development rezoning and subdivision approvals complies with all infrastructure standards provided in Table G2. Before rezoning property or amending the land use plan, a check mark indicates that the facility of the improvement is required and is a condition of development. Infrastructure shall be considered available if any one of the following is true. Infrastructure is constructed and available for access, or B, infrastructure is privately funded and granted through an appropriate surety. Or C, infrastructure is funded for construction and scheduled for completion within two years. And it says, note further discussion of road infrastructure improvements required is provided in Chapter 5 and we'll go over that at a, at a future meeting. And 4, G4, that's, again, that goes back to Development Review Standards and Rural Growth are the two corresponding planning issues that that, that gets their origin from. Implementation is ongoing and should be continued unchanged, I have. So, if you agree, I said I can go ahead and move on. Okay, under G5, while Seline County encourages non-agricultural development to locate within cities and communities and/or their growth areas as discussed in Policy G2, more intensive development or of agricultural areas may be appropriate, subject to the following guidelines and principles. The proposed change is suitable for the site on which it is located. B, the proposed change is compatible with existing and planned development in, on, on adjacent properties. And C, the proposed change is suitable and benefits the citizens of Seline County. And Chapter 3, a vision of Seline County's future for more information. And again, we can, we can look that over as well. But under, under G5 though, that's, that falls under preserving agricultural land and I have, should be continued unchanged. These are again, as kind of an example of what we do on a daily basis. We have what they call the land evaluation, survey assessment or the LESA, as they call it, LESA system. And so before any kind of like rezoning takes place or any kind of subdivision is proposed, staff will use that LESA, LESA model to, to help you all in, in, in determining a recommendation of approval or denial. G6, provide adequate development potential for a variety of housing types required to meet the housing needs of present and future residents and adopt standards for affordable housing requirements in, in each new subdivision. When evaluating need, the county should consider the availability of housing within incorporated communities. And that basically pertains to rural growth. I think it can be combined with, if I, I'll read G16 real quick for you. G16 is use federal housing and urban development HUD standards, standards to ensure that all housing units are safe and that the manufactured and, and median housing is compatible with site-built homes in, in the county. And so I think that could be combined back up there with, what did I say, it was G6. And because the similar wording, so. Under G7, consider adopting conservation subdivision regulations. Otherwise, do not allow rezoning and subdivision of property at densities that exceed those established in the applicable zoning district standards. Currently, that's three acres per living unit. And that could be actually combined with G7, consider, or G8 rather, limit residential development to densities greater than one unit per three acres to Salina's urban service area, community growth areas and incorporated and unincorporated communities which have land zoned for such use and the necessary public utilities and services. So, I was thinking combining basically 7 and, 7 and 8. Mm-hmm. Under G9, the comprehensive plan shall be used to interpret the development regulations and make a determination as to the spirit and intent of the regulations. When the regulations are silent on a particular issue, comprehensive plan policy shall be used to provide the direction needed to make that determination. And that's under the, the corresponding issue of Development Review Standards and I'm not recommending any changes at this point for that. Under G10, allow commercial and industrial zoning districts in appropriate locations throughout the rural areas so as to provide for businesses that will meet local retail, service and agricultural needs. And that's, that pertains to rural growth. Could be combined with, if you read G14 and the wording there says, to allow new industries to be sighted in unincorporated areas under the following conditions. The area has access to paved roads. B, adequate water and wastewater facilities are provided to serve the proposed industrial use, including provision for water and fire suppression. And C, proposed development will not be incompatible with existing agricultural development. And so. And so, like I say, I feel like that, that could be combined as well. G11, direct more intensive commercial development serving regional commercial needs to interstate highway interchanges in existing cities, having areas zoned and served for such development. That, again, could be probably combined with the following, the one after that on G12, which is direct highway oriented businesses to locate in close proximity within a half mile to the intersections of state highways with paved roads. You see where I'm kind of getting with, where the combinations come, they could, the wording is, is very similar.
Bit of an overlap, yeah.
Under policy G13, allow existing industrial uses to be maintained, expanded and/or redeveloped. No change recommended should be, it should be continued as currently worded. G15, support economic development efforts of Saline and other county, and other communities, Salina and other communities, excuse me. And that has its origins under the rural growth concerns. And currently, the county does support economic development with Salina and other communities. This should be continued unchanged. G16, the federal housing and urban development HUD standards to ensure housing units are safe, that's the one that I mentioned, should be combined with G6. And G17, ensure that manufactured home parks are located and designed to provide for adequate safety and accessibility for residents and public service providers through the conditional use permit process, which is what we currently enforce.
What's your comment there to mention the MHP development standards?
Yeah, I, I put that down as a way of letting, it's just an idea I had of, we currently have a requirement for conditional uses, but I, we might want to at some point have standards that reflect, like, let's say, like if you have four manufactured home parks, there are some counties that will adopt separate provisions for manufactured home parks because they're, they're, they're considered kind of a special use, special type of use, and the standards for like setbacks and things like that. Those are things that, you know, and, and there's allocating certain space for like recreational areas and that sort of thing. We have provisions for manufactured housing, but it's, we may want to look at probably, you know, kind of beefing up those standards a little bit possibly, you know, in the, you know, in the event that there's like, you know, our zoning regulations do say that it has to go through a CUP, but, you know, do we want to probably put in there some very, you know, kind of generic, basic standards for that type of use, you know, that would regulate like the setbacks between units? Because I know we had, when I was in another county, we had like a 10-foot, for fire safety, we had a 10-foot minimum between units for, for those manufactured homes in those MHPs. And so I didn't know if that was something that we would want to kind of investigate later on. And so I was just curious, would you want me to go ahead and put that language in there about putting, you know, being more specific with, with-
Well, Tim, you'd also have an issue with septic systems too.
Sure.
You have to have a big enough piece of property to handle or put a septic system on.
Yes.
As those septic systems age, that's kind of what happened in Kip, that's the reason we have a sewer district down there, there's, you know, if you don't have enough land, then what do you do?
Oh, exactly.
So.
And I know when I was in, I don't mean to, I, I, I was in Finney County years and years ago, and they ran into a problem where you had these, these kind of postage stamp type manufactured home parks that were on like maybe two acres, and they crammed like 15 trailers on there. And you go, you, you wear your, your sewer system out pretty quick, you know, within, you know, a few years. And so, yeah, I mean, that's definitely-
Are there, are there some existing state recommendations or standards that we should adopt for this, or is it something we'd have to come up with?
I think the state leaves it up to individual counties as far as, you know, the, the standards themselves. I know Dickinson County, we've, we started that process before I got there, and it was never, I think that they put it, they, our planning commission there shelved ours until, you know, if, you know, we update our plans. So that's why that kind of gave me the idea of, oh, if we're gonna, when, when this plan came up for, you know, revising, I thought, well, maybe it would be a good idea to, for Saline County to look at it too, so. So the, the options that you would have, that I've got down for you would be to, yeah, either direct staff to revise the land use policies as proposed in the above comments, or make no changes at this time.
Okay. Was there any discussion from the commission on any of these that we reviewed?
I have a question. Does agritourism fall into something under a CUP, or is it, would that be something involved in one of these policies, commercial, industrial, that kind of thing?
Agritourism would probably fall under the, you know, as far as the goals would be for economic goal. And, but it's, and, and the way that the process to do that would be to go through, right now would be a conditional use permit, so.
All right. You feel like that would be covered on one of our existing ones already though for-
Yes.
Economic development?
Yes.
Okay. The, excuse me, policy G13?
Mm-hmm.
Could that be combined as well into the industrial and commercial zoning districts and new industries with 10 and 14?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if we want to, I, or does it benefit us, the county, to keep that separate?
Just, I thought of that if, after I had done this, but it's, because it was referring to existing, I didn't know if that would be-
That's my question, is it, since we're existing, do we want to keep that separated?
Because the other two were mentioning basically new-
Yeah, new development.
New industries and new development. We could, I mean, it's just a matter of, I could wordsmith it.
Just reading it, it just kind of stuck out, I don't know if that's, I don't want to add it in there and then create more of a challenge later if we have an existing business that wants to expand, and now we have to look at the new, or new and existing type-
Yeah.
Policies.
Yeah, I, it's, it's up to you all, I said, it could go either way. I just left it out because the wording was such that it, it had to do with existing versus new, and, and I didn't know if that was a problem for you all.
There's any thoughts from the commission? None?
I could see where that could fit in by combining, as long as maybe existing was underlined or something, so-
Sure, yeah.
So alleviating a kind of confusion to somebody looking at new, and then they, then they see this other piece in there and they don't realize.
Yeah, or at least put it together so we can see that, oh, you know, here's the policy covering industrial and commercial development.
Yeah, I could, I could say existing or proposed, that's how I'd do it. I could probably just say proposed or existing industrial could be encouraged, you know, that kind of thing. I could, I find a way of, I could wordsmith it in.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions for staff?
And just to let you know, it's, when we get further into this, so like, when we get into like the sections on land use and the more specific areas on like economic development and that kind of thing, and the, the growth areas, you'll have a lot more to look at. You'll have a whole lot more to, to, to go through. And I'll probably even, you know, because of the COVID situation, I've been thinking one of the alternatives I have is I could send out surveys to like, you know, the businesses and, and that sort of thing, and residents, and get feedback. That way, I can probably reach out to, you know, chambers of commerce and economic development corporation and all that, and get ideas from them as well, and probably invite them over here to, to kind of sit in.
Because there really haven't been any updates to the maps at all since this original ever?
No. In fact, I don't think we've even, I mean, we, even though we've got a zoning map that's actually in here, we finally, I think I just recently had the, our GIS department put up a map online that's, that's available for people to see, and it's, it's, it's been updated, so.
Okay.
That can be reflected in here as well, but we can go over that again, like I say, when we go over the maps and, and any of the tables and things, the specifics, but, but-
All right.
So I'll go ahead and proceed with, you all directed me just to go ahead and do-
Any concern that, we direct staff to continue and proceed in this direction?
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, do we need a motion for that, or just a-
Please, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we instruct staff to go ahead and revise these policies and combine as we discussed, combining, with the addition of adding policy G13, combining them with 10 and 14.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we direct staff to continue in this direction, to revise the policies, combining the ones as indicated with the addition of policy G13 with G10 and G14. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any other items for us, staff?
Uh, any, any announcements or anything? I think that's, that's it.
Okay. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I think Dwayne should do it. He hasn't been here enough, it should-
Second.
His turn. All right, it's been moved and seconded, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned.